You're up, John.
July 5th, 2016, 10:00 AM.
Oh, I need this. Okay, I'm good.
Let's call this meeting to order. Hamel here. Smiley here. Randy's late a little bit. We have time here for the minutes. Number three. Approval of the June 27th, 2016 minutes.
I'll move you approve.
I'll second. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Number four. Discuss and possible action regarding resolution yearly renewals FY 2016-17. See attached Resolution 1617-01.
And that's basically all of our...
Right.
Payments.
Any of them that are on here will add, I mean, I may have to put on like next week or whatever. It's because they didn't come in, so I've got them here, but, I mean, listed.
When does our, when does our KELP program? Are we done with them?
It's interactive.
Why?
They're on the list, one of the list. Yeah, they're down.
We're doing monthly on our stuff.
Page two there.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I didn't know how you...
Well, we have to continue.
Right, but I didn't know how we were handling the...
We're not, yeah.
Sign another full year with them or...
No, we're doing monthly.
Okay.
Okay, so then, hang on just a minute, because with that...
Now, do we need to make a motion on that?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, you got something to add before we...
No, it's all in the same deal.
Okay, I'll move that we approve all those resolutions.
I'll second.
Fiscal year 216-217.
Okay. Now, have you got yours? Because, okay, they're...
I see my missing one, they haven't gotten to me yet.
Okay, well, yours is in this group, so they'll need to sign those papers.
Yeah, I need to take this. Okay.
You want me to tell you what each one is? This one's task. This is the company we use to do our oil and gas.
Uh huh.
And we gotta have them. So, um, and there's three original copies because we need an original. Shelley will need an original, and then Zane need an original. So, we can unpaperclip them if you want, I just have them that way.
I'll just see them too.
There better be three. Here, oh, no, we got that one.
Sorry about that.
There.
There is.
David, that contract is for task.
There's, uh...
That's the company that we use for our oil and gas.
Okay.
And there's three original copies, so we only need two signatures. This one is for legal services with Tizil and O'Hara in case we have to go to court on oil and gas. This is the lawyer we use. And there's also three because everybody needs an original on this one, so...
Imagine that.
Suppose if we have to use him, his fees will go down, means oil and gas is going down?
I don't know. Okay, thank you.
About three spots in that, too.
Did you hear what I said about that, my David? That's Tizil and O'Hara, that's the lawyers that we use.
Yeah, yeah.
And these are with the schools. One of them is with the VOTAC.
Shelley?
And one of them is with the school board.
Do I just sign it down here like I usually do, or sign it up here?
Yeah, you just sign here and, uh, well, it doesn't matter. You just sign, yeah, where you normally do. I think all these, I think I'm gonna love it. You guys are gonna love this.
Now, there's two more copies available. So, I will make copies after we're all done.
Two of them are there.
Okay, here, I'll get you started on these. Anywhere there are...
Spot.
Sorry.
Can I put those in here and that way you keep them?
Well, there, there'd just be one on each one, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Right here?
Yeah. Uh, here, let me stamp it.
Yeah.
Let me stamp it. There you go.
Thought I was gaining, David, but I don't think I am.
Keep digging.
Sticking up.
There was a... Did we do one with Comanche and Barbe County? Is that in there?
Uh, Comanche is, Barbe County didn't send theirs back yet, so we can't figure still get it.
Let us have that.
Just give me things to sign.
That's normal.
Okay, now, do you want me to test those so you can get copy?
He's got one more at the bottom of the pile here, but it's...
Have yours?
It's got a blue sticky on it.
You want me to turn them and see if you can see them?
It's hard to get KELP.
Okay. Get it?
I haven't found one. Read that for me.
None more?
That's for the horse barn or something? This number's different from that.
Oh, that is probably because these are monthly ones, so that's not really...
It has 17,000 in this show.
Oh, he's got it. Well, when he... Hey, man, wait a minute, what is this? Oh, this shouldn't be in here because this is a... Sorry, guys. Major signs out here and I'm supposed to sign.
Imagine that.
I thought that one was pulled out there. Thank you, Lynn.
Good thing we brought you along.
Okay, very good. That's the one that's supposed to be.
Okay, that's the same number.
Yeah, I thought I pulled that out, so, okay. Yeah, because that's showing for a whole year.
We're gonna have to sign a contract, Lynn, oversight, many.
Yeah, she's an auditor.
Keeps it so long.
Well, I'm gonna need...
Okay, there's that.
No, there's three.
Oh, did they sign first?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
I'm gonna need Randy's copy signature on it.
Uh, no.
Okay.
Since he's not here at the meeting at the time that we're done, then his signature doesn't get on.
Oh, my God, they done done.
Pressure coming at you, Kelly.
Here, there's that.
It's what I was trying to figure.
Sounds like something in the dryer.
Steve must be moving something around.
Some shoes in the dryer.
Good definition.
I thought coffee pot.
Oh, wow!
It's about the same thing.
Building falling down.
Now, Kingfisher County's gonna build a new jail.
Are they?
It's the other one built in 1933, and one is this?
I did.
You know, I don't know, to be honest with you.
Sixties?
Probably. Fifty, late 50s, early 60s.
All the bots are property north of town.
Twenty eight, I don't know. It's the lawyers, it's the same, yeah.
Yeah, it had been, probably, I can remember being built.
Which may be right now, I guess.
I was trying to figure it out.
I would think. That was the 60s, back in the 60s, wasn't it?
Yeah, I moved to seven, but I don't...
So, are they building it at their courthouse now? Are they building it in a different location?
Different location.
It is?
Two, three miles north of town.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Who is?
Kingfisher County.
It's gonna be three miles...
You know, those curves?
Right, right.
Right there on that curve, there's ODOT.
Yeah, right.
That trucking company, they bought, they bought seven acres there where that trucking company was, right there at ODOT.
So, they're gonna annex all that into town?
It already is, though.
Oh, it already is?
Let me, let me put them in here, my copy.
Oh.
Of course, you know, that's gonna take a vote of the people to put the jail out there.
Right.
Okay.
They're moving the county this week. One, I think, or two.
The one of those, right, okay.
To that location.
Oh, so that'll be right there at the courthouse?
Okay.
No, well, yeah, if, if it ever gets built. I don't think they're moving the courthouse, it's just gonna move, move the jail.
Oh, just the jail and that. You know what, though? That's not such a bad idea. Yeah, but wouldn't there be a security risk taking all the people back and forth?
Some of those do it by satellite, and they don't, yeah, video, and they don't even take them out of the jail.
See, I think we oughta go in all the... There are three other counties, put a jail out here somewhere between Major and Woods and Harper, or something like that, or Alpha Alpha County.
Put it at the Carmen School.
Yeah.
How come that's worded like that?
That's the way it's been worded ever since we, because we match...
Does.
This is our, this is our agreement that we send to them, that we're matching those funds.
Mm-hmm, but why is it worded like that? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm wrong. Why not just put it funding?
Why is it worded matching?
Why is it worded like that, matching? Why does it say that right there?
Because that was the agreement to match it. To match out the funding. So, if they go up to 50, we're supposed to match, which, yeah, we wouldn't want to match it in.
I mean, we...
Thank you, Renetta.
That's what I mean. Matching, we're, we're picking up slack.
I'm always taking care of it.
Well, right.
Whatever the slack would be.
That was just the original agreement.
Yeah, you do.
We stick to it at the, at first the fiscal year, we put that much money in to start them out.
See, that's, that's their, their...
Yeah.
And that's how we please the auditors by...
That keeps them...
Starting it out that way.
Keeping it all like that?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Do you want me to carry on with item number six? Are you all signed up, David?
I'm good.
Okay, I'll check.
Shelley, you good?
We got, we get five. Got number five.
I don't even know where my agenda went. I think it went to the middle of this mess.
Four, we just done four. That's what we're doing right there.
Five is Health Department.
Okay.
And six will be the detention companies.
Yeah. Okay, I'll find it.
Number five?
Number, yeah.
Discuss possible action regarding the approval of the Health Department annual contracts for FY 2016-17. See attached Resolution 1617-02.
Yeah, it's here. Yeah, there's one right here. Let's just go that route. Oh, okay. Oh, but hers is signed, I just cannot, I'm gonna find it. This one's assigned. It's with my agenda. I do know that. It's in this mess. I thought she signed one of those. There it is.
I'll make the motion that we sign the resolution.
I'll second. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Number six. Discuss possible action regarding resolution of detention contracts FY 1617. See attached Resolution 1617-03.
That's for the youth, right?
Yes, and we, we'll have a number one next week because I received it after I posted the agenda, but we do have to sign all of these.
I'll make that motion that we...
Okay, I'll second it.
Aye.
No.
Now, let me get the, these for you to sign.
You wanna skip seven and wait till Randy gets here?
Yeah, we gotta sign all these first in place.
Oh, we got plenty.
No, you've already got spots, I think. Um, Chairman of Sinding County, just, you just sign it there.
Up here?
Yeah. Yeah, just wanted to ensure on that one.
Did, uh...
On this one as well?
Was the voter, turned out pretty good?
Yep.
The voter turned out pretty good?
I don't know.
Wasn't very good, I don't know.
I didn't either.
Okay, now, this one's got all the...
Newsroom, but I never did ask how many were registered.
There you go.
I would think it looked pretty good.
Do I sign it up here, Chairman, or Member, or what?
Uh, you can just sign it Member, that'll be fine.
Charlie's boyfriend's next husband saw it, turned out.
Yeah. Yeah, she had a good turn, huh?
Lynn, you are so hungry.
Didn't she use Johnny on her spot to get her son's picture? The girls come step far better than the girls. I sure thought somebody stole that sign.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, it was gone, they wanna know where it was at.
How funny. I figured people had had them in there long enough that they'll come to my backyard soon as possible.
I'll tell you what, you pull them up to mow, it's damn hard to get back in your house.
Yeah. When the ground was soft, it wasn't too bad, but... With the rains. Yeah, I'm gonna keep all this written. Okay.
Wanna skip seven and go on down to eight? Or do we need to...
Let's see.
That's over the 1%, 2%, 3% deal?
Okay. Yeah, we can go ahead, that's the same thing, we just have to sign it again in the new fiscal year. You guys already approved it last meeting.
Okay, that's right, we did.
But we have to approve it again in this meeting, just to keep the auditors happy.
We just need to sign it.
Right. Yeah, well, you do wanna approve it again for the new fiscal year.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
And read it.
Okay.
Number seven. Discuss possible action regarding the resolution for budgeted 2016-17 salary increases for employees that qualify for the 1%, 2%, and 3% increases.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we do so.
I'll second.
That's how that one works, yeah.
David made the motion, I second.
Aye.
Aye. Number eight. Discuss possible action regarding the mutual aid agreement between Woods County, Oklahoma, and Comanche County, Kansas. It's just a mutual aid agreement to help them protect their county and us protect ours.
So, this, is this has a fire?
Fire, blizzard, natural disaster.
Well, probably not that.
It's a different type.
More natural disaster.
So, this would be more natural?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we accept it.
I'll second.
Maybe fire districts, maybe. But if they'd ever have something horrible happen, we could go help them, or they could come help us either way.
Hi there.
Sorry, folks.
Now, we're gonna quit talking about it.
Okay. Go ahead.
It's all recorded, though, you can do that.
I deserve everything I get.
Well, yeah, whoever, uh, which, somebody go... Yeah, so, the commissioner signed here, I'll test it there.
So, sign it up here?
At the top, or you just want a signature spot for that?
Number seven.
Okay, so... That's on number nine here.
Okay, do we need a... You wanna read that right quick, John? Number nine.
Discuss possible action regarding the certificate and municipal orders to county clerk and county treasurer, Shirdi Bonds filed with ACCO Sig for Alpha Alpha Blaine, Dewey, Harper, Major, and Woodbridge Counties.
And this is one of the things he has to do every year?
That's what we're doing right here.
I'll make the motion we accept that.
I'll second.
Did I get any high out of you?
Aye.
I think all them signs, Shelley.
Okay. Very good.
Number 10. Discuss possible action regarding the above-ground fuel storage tank system bids for District Number Two, bid number 16-17-01.
He's called Jennifer.
She's calling.
Shelley, what was the turn?
Good?
For what?
For what?
I was at 71 points.
But, I mean, all...
Oh, I don't know, I don't know yet, yeah, I haven't got...
I don't think it was very good, when, because of the rain and, because it come right about 5:00 and... Did, did it here too, didn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sure that had something to do with it. Oh, yeah. But it cleared that.
There's around 200 voters.
There's usually more than that. It's usually about 50%. It's usually about 400.
Yeah. That storm probably scared off the...
Well, you too, you gotta look, I'll bet, it may be some people on vacation that do.
Oh, yeah.
That time of year, I mean... Now, that Roland Peterson, he's in a runoff.
Is he?
Oh, that, yeah.
I don't think there's a lot of election for this.
There is no Democrat on that Senate 58 seat, that Newton.
No, he's in.
He's in, and he, he's a man.
There was none on the Senate either, he's a representative.
No Democrat?
Marlette Sand again. He had to, there was a Democrat for guy involved, but...
Linda Lynn Martin.
He, uh...
What percentage of our people voted in the recent...
Well, he changed his politics within six months.
Oh, he had to...
And he had to withdraw because he didn't get it right.
Morning, Jennifer.
Morning. How are you?
We're lively.
Ready to do this?
We're ready.
Yep.
You got two bids. One from petroleum marketers and one from Wilborn.
How do you, curious what percentage of what's can be voted, voted in the last election. Okay, thank you.
Petroleum looks good.
She says I'll re-mail it to you. The report, she hasn't done that before yet.
Looks like your price from petroleum is $59,922.51.
59, 922.
.51.
.51.
59, 922. You did it so well, just like it sounds, Wilborn.
W-I-L-L-B-O, Martin.
No, he over there.
She's checking thoroughly.
I'm gonna check to make sure everything's there. It's valid. Your next one for Wilborn, the price is $69,820.
Let me see inside the new. Hall room up there.
Yeah, we got some pictures, I think they're around Friday. Linda Tune points to it, of herself, oh, boy, it's impressive.
Looks neat, I, they hadn't finished last time I was in here, but they said all the turf's down now and.
Yeah, I think the next school board meeting, they'll have an official.
Signing over and all, whatever the property. Yeah, I talked to, who was it? Told me that the, the kids were in there, but then they had to make a big practice in there because hadn't been signed over yet, so it's, yeah.
Where'd they build that?
For the 10th Court, or drive up by there.
Oh, huge. Kingfisher's got one now, too. That's where they got their idea.
Well, Taylor Swatford coaching your house. It's pretty nice.
Well, I'm gonna make the motion that we accept the, the bid from. What is it?
Petroleum marketer.
Petroleum marketer.
Says right there on the chart.
Ah, I was on the wrong side, I couldn't see it.
I'll second it.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Looks like everything's comparable, they just tend to, I'm sorry.
Can't believe I left that much on the table. But that's, that's our normal price. That's what amazes me.
Everybody good with that?
We approved it, I think.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Number 11, discuss possible action regarding the six-month bids, 15, 16, 14.
Here somewhere, about a dispenser.
Do we have any of those guys call back, Jennifer, ever, that didn't get their package sent right?
Sign it, stamp it, approve it.
Nothing's changed.
Oh, here, this.
I kinda figured maybe.
It's in there somewhere.
This is what I want.
I figured Redwood would go, might call back.
Yeah.
Redwood.
I've had one of, I've had asphalt, fuel and supply calls, see if it's been accepted yet, but that's it. The only thing that I've had.
Sign it for me?
You know, if it's first time they've done it, it'd be a little different, but those companies have done it for years and years. They're not much excuse for none.
Well, I need to.
Do they need to sign this too, Chris?
Yeah, perfect, well, yeah, we prefer that that gets signed.
Sign that, okay, okay.
And initial the scope, that way we're all on the same page.
Okay, I'll let you, you can show him where to do all that.
We push sign that?
No, our, our stuff.
He'll show you where, on that, or sign it. Here's stuff, no, I'm trying to teach him, he gets mixed up.
Okay.
Leave that out, I want to show him what he's got, there it is. That additional dispenser.
We were 59. Anyone makes money, don't they? Off of the. I'm at County Commissioners Meeting, and they're all curious about that. Lang, thank you for your fast arrangement.
I'll sign it.
Here, 39%.
Thirty-five.
Is all the voted?
On the average, through the county or?
County, she just counted all.
Of the, oh, all the county, not just the Republicans.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just Republicans.
Well.
No.
Not if she.
Oh, no, because, right.
The Democrats didn't vote.
That's seven Libertarian, 14 Libertarians voted.
Wow, that's not freaking, 39%.
People don't get out and vote real well.
That's pretty good, really.
You think?
You get to looking, yeah.
If you vote for KD, by gosh, we'd been out 120%.
Oh, my gosh.
Who?
All that getting in the rain. Leaving home city down there.
Didn't he play for the Bucks or somebody like that?
He was gonna go play for Golden State.
Sign that.
I burned your Thunder jersey.
A and N, Texas A and N.
Somebody paid me 54,000, I'm going, 54 million a year, I'm out of here.
You give up West End?
You bet.
Just like that.
I'll leave my paper.
You're breaking up.
I'll leave my phone, put me out the door.
That's understandable, that's a lot of money.
That's ridiculous.
It is.
Place more, two places.
And what's ridiculous, more ridiculous about it, is the citizenry of the United States will pay what you get.
They're paying the ticket prices, but that pays with salary.
I bet there's a lot of sad people. Lot of happy ones out there in Frisco.
I got it.
Oakland, Golden State.
You put your initials down there.
They'll be hard to beat next year.
I saw a kid Facebook one day, had the KD version, Brazil, the Jersey Dan.
Yeah. Burning it like they did old King James.
They don't go into their starters, though?
I don't know.
They gained one, Lars.
Did you guys leak your six-month bids here?
I don't watch that, yeah, there's, there's some here, there was some here somewhere. They were sitting here on the table.
Six-month bid?
Maybe broke.
Yeah, it was on the table, we got.
Well, here's mine, if that's what you're talking about.
I mean yours, you guys.
My name's, my name's.
Okay. So you, did you mark what you're gonna wanna do, or, I mean, that's why?
Yeah, man, I forgot to bring it.
Okay.
It's pretty, I mean.
That's what we're on, number 14. Or no? Number 11? Yeah, number 11. So. Did you read it? I read it. Okay, well, I'm gonna make the motion that I approved mine by the lowest or best, because what the deal is on there, there are some bids down through there that some companies got, had a lower bid on, like steel and stuff like that. And lowest and best with availability in mind. I don't know how else to do it, the way it's bid.
We have to, because just like.
Is that how you wanna do yours?
Yeah, that.
That's how I wanna do mine, let's do all, all three of them like that.
Because some of that no-bid stuff, we can do anyway, but still.
Well, if it's a no bid, then you have to either use a phone bid, written quotes, or, or wherever you can find it available.
I'll second that. Aye.
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 Okay, we're gonna stamp it. Stamp that.
Just go ahead and.
That's my bid, just sign it.
Just feels like a new year. Tired.
You know, I'm really kinda surprised that the people that didn't bid this time, or had their, their bids were invalid because of mistakes.
Well, some of it was new managers, some of it was just, I guess, brain farts or whatever, they didn't, didn't fill out properly, but. But it's always that way, there's some items on there that are lower by some companies than, than others. Unless this thing can be forever long, if, if it was listed out by each item. And to take low bid.
Well, up here, we're. Go on it. Abundance is a pretty big deal to us.
Number 12, approval, disapproval, monthly reports for the following. Assessors, county clerk, county court clerk, Health Department, Sheriff's Office, Treasurer's Office, and the Election Board.
Do we have them all?
I don't have sheriff. But everybody else.
Everything else?
Mm-hmm, everything else.
I'll move that we approve all those minus Sheriff's Department.
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye.
There is that copy?
Number 13, any new business? No new business, huh?
I don't have any. Congratulations, Shelley.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Number 14, approved, disapproved blanket purchase orders.
I'll make the motion we approve blankets.
I'll second it.
Aye?
Aye.
There's just a few. There's just a few.
Yeah.
Golly.
I'll make the motion we adjourn.
Yeah, all right, number 15.
I'll second it.
All right.